Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're back for ordinance 24-0521, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. To my right, Councilman Z. Cohen, First District; Councilman Mark Conway, Fourth District; Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Third District. To my immediate right, Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We have representatives from Mayor's Office, the Council President's Office. We are here for Baltimore Office of Promotion and Arts. Ms. Leach, I assume at some point you'll be coming up. Not at the moment? No, 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 no. Make yourself comfortable. But I just, I assume you'll be sticking around for this one, right? Perfect. Okay. And do we have, do we have, is Tanya going to be here for this one? Oh, she's outside?
No, Justin's here.
Oh, Justin's here. Justin Williams. Okay. Mr. Deputy Mayor, outstanding. Okay. So I am going to, I think what we discussed was we're gonna, we're gonna start off with the, we're gonna start off with the Executive Director, President, CEO, or the Board Chair?
CEO.
CEO. Sorry. I knew it was one of those job positions. Okay. How many slides do we have? 11? Okay.
Yes, I think it's 11.
All right. In those 11 slides, do we have anything related to the governance work that the Board was doing?
Not specific, but I will cover that in my remarks.
Okay. When we, when we get to that portion, I'd like to have the Chair address just the governance-related stuff. And if you want to add to that, you're certainly welcome, but you know, the Board stuff's the Board's.
Understood.
Okay. All right. So Ms. Graham, please take it away, and thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you, Chair Costello, and members of the Ways and Means Committee for this opportunity to speak with you regarding our fiscal 2025 budget allocation, the progress that the Office of, Baltimore Office of Promotion and the Arts has made over the course of the year, and the vision for the organization moving forward. So BOPA's mission is to inspire and engage local, regional, and national audiences to cultivate the city's creative economy through support for the arts, production of festivals and events, and promotion of the local film industry. As the Arts Council for Baltimore City, we address the needs of the arts community through grant-making, advocacy, and the commissioning of public arts installation. But even greater than that, we strive to increase equitable access to and participation in arts and cultural activities. In fiscal 2025, BOPA and its Board are committed to continuing the progress we've demonstrated over the past several months to codify organizational processes, improve governance, and identify a model for sustainability that will allow us to do the work that is necessary to function as the thriving, relevant, and respected Arts Council that it is, that is capable of meeting the needs of the constituencies that we serve. Furthermore, we will continue the work we started to improve relations with and support of Baltimore's artists and communities with a focus on expanding how we define art and supporting the city as it takes its rightful place as an arts hub and a cultural mecca. Now, okay. So as our work sits under the equitable neighborhood development arm of Mayor Scott's vision for the city, it only makes sense that the performance goals for this year focus on tangible ways in which we can move the needle in that regard. The two measures highlighted here, increasing allocations of grants to Black and women artists and organizations that are Black and majority woman-led, are just a couple of clearest indicators of how our role as a partner in this work is an effective investment of city dollars. Support of these long-disinvested groups has a direct impact on the quality and vitality of neighborhoods. We will improve tracking of these metrics in 2025 by ensuring that all grant and festival applications collect those data. We are giving additional consideration for how we expand access to public art to 90% of the census tracts in the city. One way, a radical way to consider doing this is to broaden the definition of public art to actually include murals, because that is the most accessible, tangible way to expand public art with community and public participation in ways that beautify and improve the quality directly of neighborhoods. Now, I would dare say that the Baltimore Office of Promotion and the Arts is in a much better position than it was just a year ago. A new 13-person interim Board of Directors that is more reflective of the communities that BOPA serves was recently installed. Now, since then, they have diligently been about the business of addressing longstanding deficiencies in our bylaws and governance structure, establishing best practices for better fiscal responsibility and processes, and consideration of the path forward for community partnerships to define our organizational mission and approach to the work. Now, I'll cover briefly what these committees have been working on over the course of the last, literally, probably four weeks or so. I'll talk about who those Chairs are, and then I'll hand it off to our Board Chair for further commentary. So as you can see, our Executive Committee is made up of Interim Chair Andrew Shavis, Lady Breon, who is our interim Vice Chair, Angela Wells-Sims, who is our interim Treasurer, and April Lewis, who serves as our interim Secretary. That Executive Committee is reviewing and negotiating new contracts between the city and BOPA, providing appropriate oversight of CEO development, performance, and accountability, reviewing daily accounting, and providing oversight on significant contractual commitments, and providing general strategic direction for the interim Board's work. Our Finance Committee, which is chaired by Angela Wells, excuse me, Angela Wells-Sims, is reviewing existing financial practices and making immediate and long-term recommendations for improvement. They're also providing oversight of compliance practices and making recommendations for segregation of duties. The Mission and Community Partnership Committee, which is chaired by Derek Chase, is tasked with reviewing BOPA's strategic plan and mission, meeting to strategize on partnerships throughout the city to identify and create expanded opportunities, brainstorming opportunity to identify and report the economic impact of arts and culture in Baltimore City through things such as the State of the Arts event and Baltimore Arts Day. I will now turn it over to our interim Chair to discuss the work of the Bylaws and Governance Committee, which is chaired by Adam Holliv center and Robin Murphy.
Great. Thank you, Rachel, and good evening, Council. Thanks for having us talk. I guess the update that I want to provide is that since becoming interim Board Chair at the beginning of this year, we have been working on the plan that was presented to the Ways and Means Committee in an effort to analyze the existing bylaws, identify any deficiencies, and really to improve our working relationship with the city and having their input into how BOPA operates as a receiver of funds from this body. That has been ongoing and formed. We, again, we got this 13-person interim Board inducted at our last Board meeting, which was in March. We promptly held a Board Retreat in April in order to really bring everyone up to speed. Some of these people are very new to maybe what BOPA does, so we had a good crash course on what we are currently, what we were in the past, and where we want to go in the future. That work that Rachel mentioned has been conducted by the committees, and I'm actually going to ask Adam if he can come up and kind of get into the specifics of what the Bylaw Governance Committee has been working on, really for, I think, the past, I'll say, four weeks since that Board Retreat in April.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Holliv Center. I'm an interim Board Member on BOPA, and I am Co-Chair of the Governance and Bylaws Committee. Just to tell you a little bit about what our goals are and what we're working on currently. Our task in terms of bylaws and governance is to review the efficacy and legal sufficiency of the current BOPA/BFAI governance structure, to make recommendations regarding governance changes that might be necessary, make recommendations regarding BOPA and BFAI's bylaws to reflect any approved governance changes, Board workflow modifications, and current staffing practices, provide oversight regarding corporate requirements, and create a structure and implementation strategy for BOPA's Community Advisory Committee. One of the things that I'm sure will be touched on is we feel it's important that the waterfall related to any governance changes we make actually reflect and help to bolster the funding we receive and the services that we are designated to provide. We know that there's a lot of balls up in the air and different moving parts, but what we've actually done in our subcommittee is going to be meeting rather soon to talk about different other governance structures for public-private partnerships that exist in Baltimore, to not only determine whether the path that BOPA has either charted or somewhat had charted for itself is doing what we need it to do, but also to ensure that legal risks and requirements are thoughtfully engaged. So I'm happy to answer any questions in terms of where we are midstream with that, but that's the status right now. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think one of the things that has honestly gotten lost in the tumult of the last 18 months is that BOPA is a team of 40 full and part-time employees. They are real people, many of whom are practicing artists who have been the unfortunate casualties of fraught past relationships between its leadership and elected officials. In spite of it all, and sometimes with limited guidance on the path forward for this organization, this team has banded together through intense circumstances to deliver and fulfill our mandate to serve local creatives as the city's Arts Council, to produce quality arts and cultural activities and events, and to promote Baltimore as a creative city. And many of them have joined us here today in the gallery, and I'm thankful for that. Over the course of the past fiscal year, in our role as Baltimore's Arts Council, we have provided resources and support for emerging and established creatives and organizations alike. Grants such as Creative Baltimore, Free Fall Baltimore, and Arts in Action have distributed over $1.5 million in funding to artists and arts organizations in 2023. And last year, we dispersed over $1.1 million in prizes, awards, grants, and commissions. This team put together ArtScape 2023 despite torrential downpours and disappointment in all manner of things that we had to navigate through, and it ended up stimulating an economic impact of $12.1 million for the city of Baltimore. We welcomed over 1,500 attendees to the Inner Harbor on New Year's Eve, and even more around the entire waterfront for a captivating drone show and fireworks display to ring in 2024. Through the inaugural Live in the District Grant Program, we dispersed funding to each arts and entertainment district, and that being Station North Pennsylvania Avenue Black Arts District, Highland Town, and Bromo Arts District, for them to produce free cultural events throughout our communities, working to dispel the myth that BOPA only cares about the white L and not the outlying outside of the downtown area neighborhoods within the city. A grant from the Baltimore National Heritage Area is providing vital seed funding in our latest capital campaign to fully restore the historic Bromo Arts Tower. We also attract thousands of visitors to top-of-the-world observation level with amazing arts installations, one of which is just coming down. We are excited to announce that Ainsley Burrows will have an exhibition that will open, I think it's on the 12th of September. And so we're excited about that because he will be partnering with the estate of Jean-Michel Basquiat in opening that exhibition in September. Also, School 33 Art Center is going to be worked on. It needs a lot of loving, tender care and should be activated appropriately to bring arts installations. We do use it for arts installations, but it does need a lot of work as it relates to the infrastructure and facility. And all of these locations work to highlight Baltimore's creative assets. Since the beginning of 2024, every artist featured in BOPA's Emerge Baltimore and Peak Artist Series have identified as a person of color, a member of the LGBTQ community, or a woman. We know that these are severely underrepresented demographic groups in the art sector, and our visual art exhibition programming is a vehicle through which we can change that. We secured $20,000, a $20,000 grant, as I mentioned, to improve our facilities. Through our events programs like Baltimore Farmer's Market and Local Film Production, BOPA connects local business to economic opportunities and generates over $170 million in economic impact. We granted $50,000 to teaching artists and arts organizations for the current school year through Arts in Action, a program that encourages enrichment and youth advocacy through the arts. And then finally, we added four new murals to Baltimore City's vast network of public art this year. Now, I know the question that has been on everyone's mind recently is, well, what about ArtScape? Well, we are moving forward swiftly as we are 90 days, or inside 90 days of ArtScape 2025, 2024, I'm sorry. This is the 40th edition of ArtScape, and I'm excited to share that we are proactively engaging our partners on the footprint. We had a very solid conversation today to share with them the footprint that is currently being discussed. We will be engaging in weekly meetings, starting the last week in June, to keep them abreast and up to date on the things that are happening as we prepare for ArtScape. So we will, in fact, recognize the 40th edition of ArtScape with a countdown to the road to ArtScape that will reflect 40 things to know, think about, or remember about this signature event. Since joining BOPA, I have repeatedly been asked the question, what is your vision for the organization? A question I have been hesitant to answer because I truly believe that my vision is worth precious little if it is not informed by the people that I serve. And considering that this actually marks the end of my 10th week on the job, and I quite literally hit the ground running 28 days prior to day one on the job, I'm still working to connect with as much of the community as possible. But there are some recurring themes, some unavoidable truths, that have started to crystallize to perform a simple vision for this organization. We will be community-centric, and we will seek and respect the input of artists and residents alike. We will remember that while we are quasi, we are still governmental and should function as such, keeping in mind our accountability to Baltimore City residents, committing to work with our fellow Cabinet members as well as the administration and the members of City Council to identify opportunities for synergy, and leaning into our ability to leverage public investments to grow support for the arts through corporate foundation and other philanthropic dollars. We will take an economic development approach to arts and cultural promotion, best represented, I would think, by our work with Project ArtScape, which highlights the vitality and the importance of the fashion industry to Baltimore, both currently and historically. Recently, we took two designers to Brooklyn to participate in Fashion Week Brooklyn, to expose them to areas outside of Baltimore and to expose areas outside of Baltimore to the fact that we have the dopest fashion industry on the planet, bar none, argue with me all you want. And we will have the courage to lean into the discomfort of practicing true equitable approaches to fund disbursement, program creation, and promotion of the entire city of Baltimore. I'll close by saying this. Shortly after my selection to serve as Chief Executive Officer of what I believe is one of the region's most important arts and cultural advocacy organizations, I had the opportunity to meet with our team and establish what I refer to as my core and my floor, that which is at the heart of why I wanted to join BOPA in the first place and beliefs upon which I stand as I lead this organization forward. And it boils down to a few simple things. First and foremost, we are responsible to the taxpaying citizens of Baltimore City, be they a homeowner or a soda buyer, because all those tax dollars end up in our coffers. We have been asked to responsibly steward this investment and deliver accordingly. Secondly, the stakes are high. It would be foolish of me to sit here and try to gloss over the fact that this organization is and probably will continue to be for quite some time under incredible scrutiny. We have not lived up to what has been expected of us in the past, so we have to work that much harder to regain that trust. Third, there has been a lot of discussion about what people think BOPA is, what they think it is that BOPA does or should be doing, and where does BOPA fit into the landscape of branding, promotion, and messaging about this city. To be clear, we are the Arts Council for Baltimore City. We are a singular unit who has many parts, which should all be in support of promoting the rich arts and cultural offerings the city has to offer in an effort to attract visitors, grow the economy, and to instill a sense of pride and excitement about the city for those who live here each day. So there really is no confusion as far as I'm concerned. We just need to lean in and just do the work, and that's what we need to focus on. Lastly, and probably most importantly, I consider this a life-or-death situation. Now, I actually said this to the team, and I ensured them that this was not a threat on their lives, but just to talk about the importance that art plays in saving and sometimes not being able to save a life if it is not equitably shared. The arts have the ability to save lives, I'll say that again, and a lack of access to arts as an outlet, or as a vocation, or as a support of the educational framework can almost assuredly contribute to adverse outcomes for some of the most vulnerable populations in our city. And I know this from personal experience, having lost folks who may have practiced an art form that was not generally accepted as a type of fine art, not being encouraged to pursue that art as a vocation, ending up into the criminal justice system and ultimately losing their lives before the age of 30. It is these beliefs that informed my decision to take on probably one of the most challenging roles I have ever accepted. They shape my vision for the path forward for this organization, and they will guide the Baltimore Office of Promotion and the Arts and how we operate for as long as I have the privilege to serve as CEO. With that, I say thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Graham, I'm very excited to work with you, and I really appreciate the vision that you are formulating coming into the job. You and I had an opportunity to sit down for a few hours and just really talk about what BOPA does. For, I'll be honest with most of my colleagues here, I don't really comprehend all the various arms of BOPA, and I had an opportunity to sit down with you and get a little bit better of an understanding of that. One of the things that we spoke about, and I would love to hear how we're thinking about it in the future and how this budget helps you to do it, is how we're thinking about working in communities to highlight art, how we're thinking about murals, as you mentioned earlier, also public art and interactive sculptures and so on and so forth. What are we thinking about there? And I ask this particularly because in my district, we don't have like any arts events, and maybe we should, maybe we should. But I'm curious how you're thinking about those pieces, because I know that some of the low-hanging fruit that certainly may, many neighborhoods, many, you know, business districts and otherwise can certainly benefit from that work that you guys do.
So I'll start with the conversation we had about actual festivals and events within community. I know that we are, in fact, producing the Book Festival in the Waverly community. And I think, you know, what I learned in those first few weeks prior to joining officially the organization is there had not actually been outreach to Council members to ask them what they needed. I had the conversation with Councilmember Burnett, who literally said, I think this might be the first time anyone in a leadership role from your office has called and asked what I needed. Out of that conversation, we are partnering with him and Councilmember Torrance to provide the arts part of their STEAM Juneteenth event. We are looking to bring onboard Akio Evans, who actually, I always talk about sneaker culture being the true manifestation of STEAM, because there's a lot of technology and science that goes into developing a sneaker, but also the art of sneaker design is real. And so we're looking to staff that event and provide that support with the limited resources that we actually have to do that. We talked about the fact that you have a constituent in your district who is interested in potentially standing up a festival. One of the things that we do as an organization is provide guidance and support around securing city services and navigating what can be a bit of a challenging, sorry for the word bureaucratic, network to actually make that happen. And then, once we've done that, we also help promote those events. One of the things that are part of ArtScape, which everyone, you know, kind of focuses on, when you tell them the name of the organization, they're clueless. When you say ArtScape, a light bulb goes on. So one of the things that was, I think maybe started last year, was ArtScape in the Neighborhoods. And there's a twofold approach to that. One of the things that we're doing this year is working with West Baltimore United to activate a festival that's going to take place along the Highway to Nowhere. It's a two-day activation where there'll be live entertainment, but there'll also be kind of an artistic grassroots approach to really getting community involvement and engagement and thought around what to do with the red line and with the Highway to Nowhere. We're supporting them both with logistics support, but we're also working to take a portion of our dollars to support them in providing staging and sound support. Those are just a few of the ways that we can make that happen. I think with regard to the question around public art and mural activations, it's a twofold process. One, we're trying to clarify the process of how the Public Arts Commission functions. To be very honest, a lot of people are kind of confused around how it works. The Public Arts Commission is working to clarify that process. On our end, we're working to improve the way that we communicate how the Public Arts Commission works by layering out step by step by step, what does it mean to have a 1% for art project? What does it mean if you want to work with us to do a fee-for-service project? Something that we are currently working with RFQ to work with Wexter Technology to put a mural inside for MLK. But I think that's the best way that we need to clarify and demystify the process. It will also be very helpful as it relates to fund allocation. My understanding is that that has been a contentious issue for years, that the dollars, getting the departments to commit 1% for art dollars has been a bit of a challenge. And then, you know, we have cases where we will navigate the process, pay for the artwork to be done, and then we have to kind of wait on the funding to come, which puts strains on our budget, to be very honest. So those are just a few things. You know, I could talk it nauseam about murals and how we can engage community in the mural process. There is argument as to whether murals can be an anti-graffiti tactic. It's all in the way that you do it. It has to be community-driven. It has to be community-involved. And the secret sauce for me, from my experience, is that if you put up artwork that reflects community treasures, they are less likely to be tagged. And then, in a really radical thought, figuring out how to partner with a graffiti artist to get them involved in beautifying the wall. You give them a canvas, you work with them proactively, you never know what could happen.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And really, really looking forward to more of these efforts. The other question that I had was around maintenance of sculptures, murals, and just our various assets out there. You know, the city has, I think, we, for a long time, and we're not the only ones that do this, but we'll invest in these nice new murals, nice new sculptures, nice new, we like the new things, but we don't take care of the things that we've already done. And I'm curious how we're thinking about making sure that we don't let these things fall into disrepair, because eventually, that beautiful mural that had full investment from the community then gets sunburnt and is now no longer visible, and then eventually gets tagged, you know, five to 10 years in. So I'm just curious how we're thinking about those pieces, and if there are strategies for us to consider in maintenance of art within the communities.
So I can't speak to the strategy part. I can tell you the conversation that I had with the Public Arts Commission, literally on negative day 14, my first Public Arts Commission meeting was before I even took office. And I think it's an ongoing problem that with 1% for art, when we do the budgeting, there is no capital maintenance that is included in those dollars. And so it's a policy discussion. It is a budgeting discussion. And I think it's not so much strategy, it's just, you know, as you go through and you make these commitments, and I'll tell you, it's not limited to artwork. It is a problem across the country that you'll do these capital improvements, but there is never money that is budgeted for capital maintenance. And so it's a tough conversation you have to have where you're talking about 1% for art. Do you maybe allocate, okay, what is it going to take to maintain this over the years and budget that into the 1% for art? That's really not my lane, because I'm not on the Public Arts Commission, but kind of thinking, you know, logically, it would make sense that that should be a part of the consideration. There might even, as we talk about murals, looking at paints and materials that can be used on the walls that are more sustainable. So little history, murals used to be frescoes back when they were considered high art, and they have stayed around for hundreds of years. So maybe it's simplifying and figuring out what were the old processes that were used to create frescoes, and educate and think about using those as we look to include and increase murals across the city.
Yeah, I love that thought, that idea, and I would, you know, as you guys are thinking about the sustainability of the efforts that we put into the city and various neighborhoods, I would, you know, encourage you to, you know, engage us in that process. I look at, you know, you know, the I look at, you know, you know, the sort of premier cities, of course, we are the premier city, but you look at the, you know, France and stuff like that, like, they take care of their stuff, and they've got hundreds of years of doing that, and therefore have those assets for so long. You know, if we want to get to that point, we have to start thinking about this as more than just an art-for-a-neighborhood that cares about it for 10 years, and start thinking about it as long-term assets to the community and, you know, true investment in culture, and frankly, history within our city. So, yeah, I invite you to, you know, I encourage you to engage us in that effort. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Director. Apologies, I'm gonna have to, after my questions leave, I gotta go put my babies to bed. But thank you for articulating the sort of start of your vision, and appreciate it being informed by community. You know, I'll just say, you know, Baltimore is an arts town, it's an artist's town. I think, pound for pound, we have some of the best theater, some of the best music, some of the best visual arts, really in the country, in the world. And I think we, as a city, not just BOPA, but Baltimore, needs to figure out how to better embrace artists and the arts community. And I think that's going to be an ongoing conversation, clearly, we've had, and it's been at times fractious and challenging, but, you know, I just, for me, it's really important that we kind of name that this is an art city, and it should stay that way. And in that vein, you know, I'm interested, you know, when we think about cities generally, what I think you see is they start with a rich, vibrant arts culture, and then artists get gentrified out.
Right.
And then, they're no longer filled with artists. My brother lives in Austin, Texas, right? And, you know, the thing was keep Austin weird, but now it's so unaffordable that most artists can't afford to live anywhere near Austin, and certainly not in its traditional arts areas. So I am interested in your thoughts on how we make it more sustainable to be an artist in Baltimore. Obviously, this is a conversation about affordable housing, and about transportation, and about all the other things that we, as a city, need to do, but I think, specific to the arts community, for our vibrancy, for our continued, for us to continue to thrive and to look like the Baltimore that I think we should look like, I think it's really important that we make this a place that is welcoming and affordable to artists. And I know there's been some efforts around artist housing, but just curious your perspective.
I would say that one of the thoughts that I bring to this conversation, honestly, it didn't click until recently, I was speaking with the folks with Be More Art. Before I came to the Reginald Lewis and I came to BOPA, I actually worked with Family League of Baltimore. And one of the things that we did is we looked at improving outcomes for children, youth, and families in the cities of Baltimore. And it was a holistic approach. You had to consider all of the needs that fed into the fact that there was childhood absenteeism and lack of attainment, and it's, you have to look at it holistically and ask yourself the question, why? So one of the greatest exports from the city of Baltimore is our talent. And I'm not just talking about the fact that people know about our talent, but literally, artists leave Baltimore because they don't feel supported, it potentially could become unaffordable. And so my perspective on it is that you look at the entire need of the artist, we are going to stop just giving dollars, dollars are important, but that doesn't solve the problem, that it's a Band-Aid, to be very honest. And so that's why my perspective is, we should work with folks like Maryland Citizens for the Arts to advocate around policy and look at these things that impact the ability to stay in a place, and look at them from the artist's perspective. I have a background in the Community Land Trust conversation, and looking at what would it look like to find, you know, some of these homes here that are unaffordable, putting in an artist-driven community land trust model where there is permanent affordability that's built in to help them stay. You know, healthcare is a huge issue, and physical health as well as mental health. And working with my counterparts at the Health Department around, okay, what are the services that we can connect artists that we are funding to, to help improve the life that they live so that they're able to create unfettered? And so I think the short answer to your question is really doing something, from my understanding, it hadn't been done in a while from this seat, and that's leveraging the fact that we are a part of the mayor's cabinet, and working together with the other leaders and the other cabinet positions to say, okay, you're looking at these problems, what about the artist's perspective? And advocating for policy that bakes in permanent solutions that live beyond the grants that we're able to provide.
No, I appreciate that, and we'll just say, you know, if there is a way that the council can collaborate and support that endeavor, I just think, as we think about what Baltimore wants to look like in five years, 10 years, 20 years, preserving the sort of scrappiness of our arts community, I think is extremely important. And so, you know, hope that can be something that we collaborate on.
Absolutely.
My last question, I'm just interested, I went to Philly not too long ago, and at their City Hall, there was this really interesting public art display. It was kind of like this, like, weird mural-y thing that people were, like, interacting with, and I thought that was really interesting, and I would like to see us do that here in Baltimore. This is the People's House that we're sitting in, and I think we should do more to activate the space, particularly in front of City Hall. We have this big, you know, open park that gets some utilization, but in my mind, not enough. And so, just really interested in how we can activate City Hall from a public art perspective and make this, you know, just something that people are, like, excited to come, participate, be part of their democracy, but also, you know, see some art and participate with that as well.
I almost want to defer to C.A.O. Leach. I know that Senior Advisor Tanya Miller-Hall has done a yeoman's job in working to reactivate the space. I saw that you had the apartheid exhibition up, which at one point was going to be a partnership effort with the Reginald Lewis Museum. I think that is where fixing, in my opinion, what has been a needlessly fractured relationship between BOPA and the mayor's office is vitally important. And so what does it look like to partner on those activations, leverage funds, be in conversation with the People's House and the mayor to say, okay, you know, what could that look like? We have access to artists, you all have a vision, how can we work together to actually activate that? The funny story is, I grew up in South Jersey and Philadelphia, and so I'm very familiar with the investment that that city historically has made. I want to say, going back to Wilson Good, who actually started the Anti-Graffiti Task Force, which is now Mural Arts Philadelphia, they, there's always been this support from the mural space, honestly, of some type of arts and culture in the mayor's, I mean, sorry, in City Hall. If you look across the way at what used to be Police Plaza, there is a huge installation by a South Jersey artist. By the way, there's the movable pieces of the chessboard, and so it's just really always been baked in that that has been something that administrations have really prioritized, and I believe fully that this administration does, and we look forward to working with them to make, you know, to activate those things, if at all possible.
Thank you for that. I'm happy to provide some additional context. So we actually have a plan around activating Moore Memorial Plaza, but before we can activate it, there's work that needs to be done. So Wreckin' Parks is responsible for managing that space. So there's work that's going to be done around installing pavers, just to beautify the space, and then we'll look to do additional installations there. Some of the things that we have been talking about is potentially doing a skating rink and bringing families to allow them to skate outside of City Hall, which is also what they do in Philly, and during the wintertime, they turn it into a ice skating rink, which, of course, we don't want to compete with other, you know, activations happening throughout the city. So we've been in conversation with Downtown Partnership to think about how we better activate the space, but before we even get to activation, there's work that we need to do to upgrade the space. I believe that work is going to start happening this summer, but let me double-check with Director Moore and Lindsay on my team, who's been managing that. But appreciate that.
No, that is good to hear. I, you know, just think it's an opportunity, and I think we should, as much as we can, invite folks into their democracy, and look forward to seeing that happen. Again, thank you, excited to see you in this new role. Appreciate your commitment to our city, to this community in particular, and looking forward to working with you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just very quickly, you mentioned Lindsay, and he shows up. So the cobblestone, so there are a couple of things happening at City Hall, there's work on the cobblestone that's happening next month, and then at the end of next month, that is when the pavers and the work at the plaza will begin. And then after that, we can start to activate the space again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciated our time a few weeks ago. Thank you for meeting with me. I wanted to know if you or the Public Art Commission is starting to kind of think through its inventory and what they've deaccessioned. I, as you know, have been very passionate about the fact that I think it was a horrible mistake to deaccession the mural, mosaics in Lake Clifton, and I'm hopeful that, well, there's a lot of people working on getting them out of Lake Clifton before it gets demolished. But it seems to me like the city's art is the city's art, period, and always should be. And certainly, we have to think about, I'm not an artist, you'll have to forgive me, but we have to think about whether, how we make our art so that it's, in the case of, you know, school buildings, if they're not always going to be used, to make sure that there's a way to take it out and put it elsewhere. That didn't happen in this case. But what, it just, and I think that there are two other pieces that have been deaccessioned as well that are in disrepair right now, but still should be really the responsibility of the city to figure out. So I'm just kind of wondering if that conversations are already happening around that, or will happen at some point regarding the city's, you know, really amazing art.
I think you're joining them for their next meeting in June, and they are excited and looking forward to the conversation, and I would think that that's going to be the jumping-off point for, you know, they're in a process right now of really looking at the way they do things, processes and the like, and really figuring out their role and their responsibility, and then also figuring out working with other city agencies to keep the lines of communication open. And so I think the short answer to your question is, I'm looking forward to that conversation really starting when they have the conversation with you. I think what they've really been focusing on is documenting process and rightsighting process as it relates to requests for public art, both, you know, that come through the 1%, private art that is donated, we had a whole conversation in our last meeting around that, and really looking at just doing the work that they do better. And I think this is a prime time to lift up the conversation around property accessioning of those pieces, and how to look at what went wrong with Lake Clifton, and how to learn from those mistakes.
And hopefully, we can get it back into the collection, I don't know how that works. But I want to just thank you for being willing to just pick up the mantle on the Baltimore Book Festival, and, you know, we're very, very excited about it, and Waverly, I think it's going to be great. So I appreciate all you're doing, and I look forward to working with you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I mostly don't have much to say, because I just trust my friends here who are working in this interim board capacity. I mean, this interim board is a bunch of rock stars. I'm really, really happy to see who's working on this, and to see so many of them here. Thanks for being here. And so I'm just awaiting the outcomes here, and I trust the good work of this group implicitly.
Thank you.
I will say, I do have a bill that, to address Councilwoman Conway's concern about maintenance of work. Council, Comptroller Henry and I have worked fairly extensively with this administration to discuss what needs to be done to straighten out the 1% for the arts funding, and to make more clear the process of allocating that money, and specifically allowing for it to be set aside for maintenance of existing work as much as is needed, just as much as creation of new work. So that's a bill that I will introduce in the coming term, and hopefully, we can get straightened out pretty quickly in the new term. And, you know, on the issue of deaccessioning, you know, I think that just some work needs to go away sometimes. That's all I'll say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Graham, thank you all very much. We are now in recess until Thursday, 9:00 a.m.
Happy Memorial Day.
Feeling is mutual. Thursday, May 30th.